All right. Question is, are you ready?
Let's go on those. I'm going to start checking the nation in your. Go grab bells. I don't know what happened. Oh, we are at ease. He left you. Dick, you said all right, as soon as you walk away from. Okay. We're gonna check it out again. Here's some, right? That's good. Can I sort of? Oh, yes. It's a zoo. Absolutely. Not okay. Yeah. And then people need to take a piece with. So we try to. So the China sort of. Okay. And we as meeting. Yeah. Excellent. Applicates and. How did? It doesn't start to be. Do you think I'm not really? Any. You know that. When I. Okay. Listen to me. It's quiet. Good. Alan, this sounds like I've been in the road system. Let's see, why don't we just set iron somebody to take a look at it first, just do this. Get on Google Maps and do street view. Dive the roads. See where they are like here. The sub-bonkers, this is the route that if ITV makes an interchange ten ninety-five Thursday road, this is the traffic. Of this traffic is the road which was. That walking to the west and onto that intersection. So. Or it could be down this road. This makes a little way. In favor, it's all over to that, you used to like here and through. No, it's it's paid. It's paid, but looking at how easily could it be expanded with shoulders on. Yeah, but it's a pit to go by the way. So fifty p is bottom, right, there. Then this is too bad here. That was the top to start going down the hill. It actually is. Is more than here. And now we got that on T about. You can see we're going down the hill. This is well, right now in two or four minutes, so that's. There's ten miles. Go down the curves. Two ninety thirty curves and. Yeah. You're for. First poison. And we make sure there is next. It curves, curves, and it drops down the hill all the sharp one. So. What you say, and this is one of the roads, so we potentially get some kind of upgrade because of what seems to serve. That was to the energy. It's ridiculous to have that little big pretty crazy road. We seem to have served that, so this guy is ready to bring that site to us and say, look, you gotta do something there. That's. Cause all the traffic to hold out. They're right to be doing so. No, it's kind of early. But you have a responsibility to look at the system. Upgrade the system to handle the traffic jams that they're creating. So now that's. Down the hill, and it doesn't. This doesn't reflect, well, as it's pre-cakes, speaks, there's times, unfortunately. Down. Down past that, so you initially will probably just. Jump down in the intersection section. On yourself. I can only jump back to the top of the hill. Don't do that. There's no image. Very bad, so back to the topic. You know, session. So I'm saying. Yes. Really easy with flat. And what we had, I was talking about was do this first and then. Like if you're born, it's a rubber on the road. Which helps your big foot through this, like. It's terrible, something just. He's out there, look, there's another curb. That's a big must seem to the middle of hills. And she don't see in this video. And then the curb. Oh, that's I've seen them out there. Also, by going to the. Even hear the subject doing. All right, Alan, I think we've got to figure it out.
Yeah, I'm gonna call this evening's meeting of the planning commission order, it's. Something, but twenty-three.
Four, four, twenty-three, five forty-four, okay, five forty-four.
Four, four, forty, great queuing second. Four forty-three. Four forty-three. It's not a good start. All right, all right, we're the first out of a business is the flexible legions. For my stand, face flag. There's legions to be high. When I try this. And you're proud of the portrait of sustance, one nation under God, the invisible, with whether he adjusts the overall. It's not indicating in this. It's indicating the level of audio, so it's doing well, these guys. So hard. All right. So now the whole call starting there.
Mr. David.
Mr. Songstad, Mr. Davis.
Mr. Scott.
Prusher Frankenbar. Right, we have a quorum. Uh, so we can proceed. Did you change the agenda?
So Jacobell Planning Directors, there was an amended agenda published. Couple of days ago or three or four days ago, so we had initially had a. An agenda item with Mr. Jack Howard and some associates to discuss. Potential Subcommittee for Source Water Protection. I think we discussed this at our last meeting. Jack had some. Family events happen, he's not able to make it tonight, but he's he's requested be added to the next agenda, so. I'll bring that up at the last action item you guys have tonight. And request that be added to the next agenda. Um, not not next week, but the second of September, I believe, is your next normal meeting, so. That's the only change of the agenda, which it was published, but I thought I'd. Announce it, so.
Can you announce those?
So we are still recruiting for planning commissioners, so we have three open seats right now and two open seats on the zoning commission, so. We've only gotten a couple of applications, if if I remember right, and the applications are due by noon on Friday. That's the only, that's the only else I got.
Move to the consent agenda, we see approval the August fifth, twenty twenty-five, planning commission minutes. Need a wrong corrections, auditions, operations. Qualifications.
Nope, that look good.
Hearing none, like you said, agenda approval of this is helpful. And we'll move to public comments.
Hi, Susan Drumheller, St. Louis, Idaho.
I'll turn it on for you. Just. Yeah, we have to do that, so sorry. Hey.
Susan Drumheller, oh, there goes feedback, I'll just stand back a little bit, so that help. Um.
It'll actually stretch those.
Stand closer.
Audio is really good from the Zoom world, just FYI, even before the mic was turned on, I'm just saying that to help you.
You can hear me, okay? Um, Susan Drumheller, St. Louis, Idaho, and on behalf of Project Seven B, first, I just want to thank you for. The changes that. You know, eliminate the minor land division. Turn it into a, not a short slab, but I guess a short subdivision is the new term versus long subdivision. Uh, we think that's great, I mean, the main thing for us is that. We. Uh, improve the accountability, the transparency, the ability for the public to understand what your seat. Comment on what's going on and also the opportunity for a real appeal process, I think is really important. And reinstating the Public Health District. Uh, sign off prior to approving subdivisions is extremely important to us. I haven't had a chance, we haven't had a chance to really review all the changes. We're concerned about going to hearings, so soon next week, and so we respectfully ask you to delay that until. Books have a chance to actually review the changes, and also if you make any changes tonight. You won't be able to go to a hearing next week anyway, I would assume. But one thing, you know, as I was skimming it today, and I can't stay here for the meeting, hope to watch it later. Um, but as I was skimming the document today, um, I was concerned about increasing the family split. To up to ten lots, you feel like that's an opportunity for. You know, creating another loophole in the code and. I think it would be right for abuse, so that's one concern I have and. Thanks again.
So the workshop. They just to go. So we made, we had a bunch of workshops earlier in the year. On the on the MLD, said whether or not we should keep MLDs. You should do something else. Uh, we made the preliminary. Uh, decision not obviously our binding, uh, because it wasn't hearing, but. That we would eliminate the MLDs, we will go to. We've now turned to a short subdivision and long subdivision. We worked through a lot of the changes to the code sections at the time. But, uh. Obviously, with such a major change. Uh, there needed to be, uh. An analysis of more than just code sections we were looking at. To make sure that the following would fit together. And we basically relied on staff to do that. And we understand that obviously the board of county commissioners is. Very interested in getting this to them as soon as we can, so what's we're trying to do. Uh, so what we're doing tonight is basically looking at. I understand. The. The staff's. Recommendation as to coordinating all of that. So there really isn't any. I mean, we're not looking at any substantive change. We're looking, we already kind of looked at those recommendations. I mean, made those initial recommendations. And now we're looking to see whether or not. It all fits together. Uh, so. We don't, we don't really expect there to be any substantive change. Which is why we'll set for hearing. We're just looking at this kind of. So that's. That's that. Appreciate the comment.
Reg Cofford, Brown County, um, I attended those meet, those hearings and workshops and. All that was decided on those was that. That MLDs were going to be removed and everything was going to be put back under Lupa. And this is the first look anybody's had at these new subdivisions, so they weren't discussed because this is completely new. And so we expect changes to be made. And therefore, the state law requires, you know, to see for fifteen days before a hearing. Um, I didn't get a chance to read it also because this wasn't really noticed well for the public. But I didn't, I didn't see, and you can tell me if I'm wrong, um. The addition of the definitions for urban water or community system.
It wasn't discussed or requested by the commission.
It wasn't requested. It was requested that it got put into the new code, whether at it.
Do you want me to address the questions, Chair? So from my recollection from those previous. Workshops is we'd never discussed urban water, the definition of urban services. We discussed adding a review by Panhandle Health, which has been added to this curve revision.
I I believe Don requested or Dave did, and I can send you the link to that where it was requested, and so I still requested those be added. Because under table twelve, what is it, four, one, two, or two, one, for the density of dimensional standards, they do refer to urban water, and we don't have definition, and that has been. Confirmed by past planning members that that definition doesn't exist. And community system is. Used on the application. Or the short, unless you're coming up with a new application, but it's on there as a checkbox, and that is also not in the code. And that should align with IDEQ's definitions. And I'll send that to you.
Okay.
Um, I was concerned also with Susan said about the family splits going up to ten, because part of the reason for the. Removing the MLDs was road and bridge support because of larger subdivisions going in without the infrastructure for roads being built. And going up to ten divisions and family splits pretty much dismisses that and allows someone to to divide into ten lots without. Uh, road improvements. Uh, the other thing we saw is replacing. The words to a hearing body instead of specifying which hearing body, and that kind of. And messes it up or it just causes more confusion. Because we have the hearing examiner, the zoning commission, and the planning commission now, and sometimes they make recommendations, and sometimes they make. Um. They have semi judicial role to make decisions, and. It's not defined well in this revision of the code that they just put out, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I I might be able to kind of cover part of that, you know, um, when it says, you know, uh, being reviewed by. Whatever body it's going to be. The planning commission. Planning commission only reviews legislative files, we only make recommendations, we do not make approvals. The only things that the planning commission. I mean, the planning. The zoning commission and the hearing examiner can do. The ones that they can actually grant are variances and CUPs. Uh, otherwise, they also make recommendations to like zoning changes. Um, so it's ultimately up to the board. On those things. Trying to remember, before we got to that part, there was something else that was out of here, but was, oh, the roads. Um, you know, currently, if you look at our our DLP process. Uh, you know, you have to have the fire, fire chief of that, whatever districts it is in, to sign off on. And so I believe there is a check and balance on there regarding roads.
Uh. And and fire safety. Cause currently, right now, you can get a location from us, fire, fire chief signs off, so that check and balance is in place.
Well, actually, the fire. Actually, the fire chief is now signing up, or at least Chief Armstrong is, that he can protect no subdivisions. At, in the county whatsoever, and so that's not really a check and balance.
Say what, repeat that.
He says on his comment that the South Park Fire in North Side cannot protect, like on the last one, is this subdivision or any other subdivision. And so that's not really a check or balance. And um. There was one more thing I was going to say, the last two subdivision hearings were for, I don't know how to pronounce it, Bahia, Dussel. And Deerfield subdivisions, and on both of those, it was. Uh, really contested that the county wasn't doing traffic impact studies, ITD and the county have completely different triggers. For when a traffic impact study is required, for the county, it's in three point five of the comp plan. And it's at the discretion of the um. Road and Bridge Director. And there's criteria within the Road and Bridge Manual of Chapter Nine that have four criteria, and these subdivisions are meeting three of them, and. They're still not being requested, and so it's not in the code to do a traffic impact study, so these are getting lost somewhere. And for the Bahia Dussel subdivision. That we have found out that it was actually the engineer. On the job with Sewell, who requested of the Road and Bridge. Um, director that they were right in it. That a traffic impact study wasn't required because it didn't meet the ITD. Requirements, and there are two different things, and so somehow. It's not correlating, and it says in the manual for Road and Bridge that that is where the county has the opportunity to ask the developer to mitigate for. Uh. Road improvements.
You had a couple. But, of course, public comments, well uh. Going to uh, we're not having a presentation by Jack Howard, so we'll go into the pending work of changes. I would suggest that we uh. Start with uh. Five B or C. Uh, the plus three. Chapter three. We're working on something. August fifth, version.
Yes. Both recent ones.
That's okay. So I'm talking about, so what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that we look at, you look at here. The agenda. Changes to the general, just several days, MLD, so B.
Oh, that files.
Okay, yeah, he's talking agenda item five.
Got it.
B, which would be the AM. Twelve twenty five.
Oh, okay.
Which is your chapters four, six, and eight, mainly it's chapter six with some minor edits to uh, four and eight.
Well, that AM twelve, the other twenty five is not the complete file, it's just the changes of that file, that correct?
So it's the proposed text amendments to Title Twelve, yes, but there's not a. I mean, the, the staff report, I completed earlier today, Alex is going to review it and we'll publish it tomorrow. You have a hearing scheduled for both this item and AM thirteen, which is some changes to chapters one and two. Um. They'll be heard on the same night on the twenty seventh, hopefully a recommendation, so. Yeah. We want to back up a little bit as far as the. The timeline so far. There's a little bit of urgency in this, um. So. The board established a moratorium. On minor land divisions in April and then had to redo it in May, this. Planning Commission uh, first discussed uh, some of, you know, the basics of this, is the idea, the concept of changes to chapter six and April twenty ninth. And then you discuss further amendments or the amendments further in uh, May sixth, twentieth, and June third were the final workshops, uh, where. I gathered up a lot of your input, um, and tried to draft up a code section that, that. Took into account all the discussion. May I have missed something? Sure, I think a good example is the family exemption or the family division adding to ten lots, I don't think that was brought forth to this, I think. I believe that was probably a draft that got copied into this codified version or this uh, draft, those versions, so. I think the concept there was from staff's point of view was. If administrative decision is ten lots for a short plat, then why not be the same number of parcels on a family division? Um, you can counter argue saying there's not infrastructure standards, or there's not as many infrastructure standards for um. Uh, family exemptions or family divisions, so perhaps, you know, we, you can shift that back to four. Uh, as far as like what the procedure, the process is going forward, um. So this has been noticed for a public hearing next week, you don't have to recommend the entire um, changes as drafted, you could recommend a portion of it, so you could. Kick that back from ten to four or other minor edits like that, um, and then the board makes a final decision. This is planned to go to the board on the twenty second of next month, so September twenty second. If you backwards plan, the end of the moratorium is October first. So we need to get a, a hearing in front of the board with time to. Publish in the paper and make that ordinance effective before October first. The other option would be, uh, the board could extend the moratorium. Um, and give additional time to continue to work on these items, so. I plan on presenting this uh, to the board on the tenth. I think that's the update meeting, I believe it's a Thursday morning at ten. Of September, and get kind of their feel after your hearing on if they're going to want additional hearings, and if we need to extend the moratorium after the tenth, so.
So again, to be clear, is there somewhere else a complete copy of chapter six?
Like in its entirety?
Like entire.
Current draft?
Yeah.
So you have the red line version in front of you, you have the cod. You should have it in your meeting folder for today.
Hmm. Yeah, I, I don't. I don't recall. The parcel.
Yeah.
Reference.
Okay.
In any of our meetings, so.
But we, we, I mean, we've discussed, we get to that.
Sure.
It was discussed an hour.
Well, I mean, if, if we can pull it up, we're, you find it or have it on the big screen.
Yeah.
Just, that's fine. Go to the agenda for August. Nineteenth.
Yes, right, I gotta find the agenda. Which I did, okay. Yeah, but it's, I have my plans here, oh.
Uh, in the. Moving folder. But anyway, that's just, that's just a comment, we can, we can talk about later, do you want to go through what you've done, Jake, in terms of. Oh, so cleaning up, very squinty.
It says I'm presenting my screen and I'm not seeing it, can I ask if anyone on Zoom can see my screen? We're had some.
I could see appendix A, summary of proposed title twelve updates.
Great. So it's showing somewhere, thank you, Dave, uh, we started ten minutes late because something happened during the budget meetings yesterday, and the Zoom. Settings got messed up, and it looks like it still maintains some kind of issue, so. I don't know.
Just that, I, I can't see the whole page, I see it down to uh, twelve.
Right.
Now it's scrolling, yeah, just so you know.
So you're, you're seeing what I'm displaying, which I was hoping was on the big screen here.
They don't need to see that stuff.
Maybe that'll work, but I can't, I don't think I can show this and the participants at the same time, I don't know what settings are going on, so. Um, I don't know sure how you want to handle public comment, or do you want me to go through this and you guys discuss it, do you want public comments throughout or at the end, or? I'm sure.
We'll try it at the end.
Okay. So what I'll do is then present, have you guys ask your questions, and then um, I'll pull that screen back down, and we can do public comments, so you can see folks, that works. Yeah, so as I mentioned, uh. This workshop, I think it was requested by Mr. Lynn Scott to go over these um, one more time before the hearing, which again is scheduled for next Wednesday at four thirty, um. To get this commission like one opportunity to review this, again, you can make recommended changes, um, we can't. Yeah, so I would say red line or write down your own changes that you would be proposing to this. Um, or as a group, um, kind of discuss them idea and make a recommendation next week to the, to the board, so.
Okay, individuals.
So either as individuals or as a group, but we can't publish a revised version of this, because this is what has been published for public hearing, which is next week. Um, you can make a recommendation to the code sections that are being changed here, um. Uh, so you can either. What I'm, I'm trying to say is you can recommend in part or in whole the amendments as proposed. Sure, thank you, Colin.
At the hearing next week. That's for us to recommend change, changes to code. And, you know, this is the, this is what was being discussed at that meeting. We can, at that meeting, as a planning condition, as individuals, as a planning condition. Make suggested changes to that recommendation and then forward that to the board. And that's perfectly legal. You know, we don't have to then renotice that, it's just not as far as just a recommendation. Or we'll make the final decision. So for instance, if we wanted to change. The creation of ten lots rather than. To the creation of four lots, we could do that next week. And recommend that change to board, as long as we do that as planning. Now, right, Mr. Bell?
Yep, yeah, by majority vote, yeah.
Right. All right, so why don't you go ahead?
So a lot of these are.
They made one statement.
Sure.
There was a statement made. That we didn't have any language in front of us or something to that effect. At our workshops, that's simply not true. We had, we had language, we had three options that we started with. Uh, one of the options we chose was the. Elimination of the MLDs, we then worked on the language, so we all knew what those changes were going to be. Staff has done is make sure that those all fit together. And, you know, are, are cohesive set of proposed sections, so with that.
So a lot of this is reference changes to naming conventions, so one of the, one of the last major changes you guys asked me to do was. Change uh, preliminary plats and subdivision to long subdivision and short subdivision, when I started implementing those changes. The code sections didn't make sense anymore, so some of these are, there's like a domino effect, when you modify one, it makes more sense to pull a section from here and go to there, so. As I go through this, I'll try to like pull out some of those changes I haven't presented to you guys in the past, it's not really substantive changes, it's really just a format of the code and, and how the ordinance is written, so. Um, yeah. So as we mentioned before, the first um, is just a change pulling out note nineteen, which is requiring land division processes for the sanitary restriction lift. Um, given that in chapter six for all um. Subdivisions, both short and long subdivisions, uh, it's going to be required for sanitary restrictions to be lifted by PhD, so rather than put it in the density and dimensional standards, it's, it's a standard found in chapter six. We could put it in both places if you wanted to, but um, it made more, this is the way I think we agreed to at the one of the meetings. There's um, a handful of changes to just the section titles. And I'll go through those in a minute as we work through, so. Minor edits to six hundred, um, rather than. Um, call out lot land adjustments specifically, we also have boundary line adjustments, so rather than name them both, it's just, or adjustment procedures, but it's just kind of a. Naming convention, given we are regulating a couple of different types of land adjustments. Or property line adjustments. Um. We already talked about CE at one of the last meetings, so it incorporates uh, create, transfer, divide lands. So rather than be specific to subdivisions, it's, it's being applied to all land divisions. Um. Kind of inclusive of any land division type. And feel free to stop me if you guys want me to explain any further, any of these code sections. So. Uh, six, ten, we're calling out specifically subdivisions or short subdivisions, see there's. We probably should apply to long subdivisions and short subdivisions, so maybe that's an additional change we make. Or call it specifically just subdivisions, because we redefine subdivisions to be any division of a platted land and the two or more lots, so. Either be inclusive of both, or maybe we remove and uh, short subdivisions. I updated some code references, because some of our um. Code sections and references have modified throughout, so twelve, six, eleven is, you're seeing here, it's being removed and moved into chapter eight, so we have um. We have chapter six, for whatever reason, has its own definitions, um. So we've moved the definitions of land division types to chapter eight, which is our definition section, section, it should apply to the entirety of the code, not just to this one chapter. Now, so we're calling that just reserved. Um, the only change is a six, twelve is just a reference change, given there's a new reference number for that, because some code sections have moved around. Six thirteen, um, we talked about this previously, it's uh, giving a more expansive list of who could be um, a receiver of a gifted parcel through a land division, a family division. Um, this came out of, I believe, Cootney County's code, because they have a more extensive list than we did. Um, the two different examples here were. Not clear, so rather than um, try to clarify the, the first one, or the second example, we pulled it all into one, because it made more sense. Under five, here's where. Um, it expands a little bit more, so this is that language you asked me to pull from Cootney County's code. And so this is an acknowledgement of Panhandle Health indicating the location on the subject property or nearby properties by easement. Has been identified and approved that can meet the wastewater disposal requirements for the proposed parcels or parcel, yes, sir.
It, so that would go ahead and require an actual, an actual sanitary restriction left on any kind of short or long subdivision.
This is specific to unplatted. Divisions via family division, so. A sanitary restriction lift is specific onto a plat. Right, so this is creating an unplatted piece of parcels or unplatted, unplatted piece of land, so this is a standard applying to those unplatted family divisions. This is how Cootney uh, County worded it, and I, I like the wording, I, I. Presented this idea at one of the last workshops with you guys, and you said, yes, we want all new lots, both parcels created to have this sanitary restriction, so.
You know, and, and that was, one of the things, if I'm not mistaken, I, I brought up. You know, I think that Shoshone County, uh, you know, is creating these recreational parcels, recreational splits. No intention of going in for any kind of. Your dry camping, this would preclude. Those from being being created.
Via family division, yeah.
So if it's a short plat, though. So if you're going to make, go through the short plat. Do they also not all have to have that sanitary?
So, yeah, we'll get to short subdivision, long subdivision, because that same standard applies via sanitary restriction lift on the face of the plat.
Right, so where I'm getting at is, how can these people go ahead and create uh, these, you know, recreational RV camper type lots on, with many of them down in Portland River. Uh, where there's no intention of ever, you know, putting a sewer in. And how, how are those going to be facilitated?
I think it could be facilitated via either a PUD or a plat note restricting the parcel and the uses on that parcel, so take it like an HOA common lot, right, where you can't. You restrict that use to whatever the, the, um, the face the plat restricts it to.
We, are we, are we going to have that somewhere here and go that that can happen? I think now's the time we should go ahead and allow that, put that language in there, if we're, if we're saying that that could happen. We should go ahead and include that, because I, I'm aware of, of several different. You can call them subdivisions, they were created back in the sixties and seventies, where they're, they're just strictly recreational lots, you can't, they do not work. Okay, um, but people can still use for kick. And they still have value that way, um, so I think we should have. Some opportunity. For someone who wants to go ahead and pursue that, but they haven't had it for that, okay?
Well, maybe they get a waiver from. Panhandle Health.
Could be that, um. I, there might, it might be covered into the definition of subdivision, I, I don't know off the top of my head, so, um. When we get down to that section, we can look at in chapter eight, the definition of subdivision, I believe excludes like commonly, common lots or something along those lines, if I remember right, so.
Yeah, we might have to massage that a little bit.
Okay, I'm sure that will fix the problem that Matt's talking.
Right, if it's a specific restricted use, I.
It's a lot. It's a lot, I can understand, but.
I don't know if that, if that's been a demand that I've seen um, in our county.
I, you know, I.
Alex, does that sound familiar at all?
There more time.
Uh, has there been a demand, or has been, have you seen any applications where someone's requesting? Like a limited use on a newly divided property for like recreation purposes only, and not like residential or commercial, anything else?
No, not, not other than a common lot.
Yeah, so HOA common lots we've seen, or for, if it's like a common. A TV might shut off, or get a standby notice. Um. Or for like a shared drain field or a well lot or something like a utility lot, I've seen a couple of times, so.
Okay. Any old one.
I don't know if I have the remote for that TV, if I click it, I'm sure all the TVs would shut off, so, let's just keep going. I don't know if I have the remote for that TV. If I click it, I'm sure all the TVs would shut off. Let's just keep going.
Maybe Alex, you could go back on that other computer.
I'm not going to let him touch it. It's working right now, so we'll just keep driving on. So some of this is uh. Similar language, it's just reformatted into new sections. I remember right. Legal descriptions, parcels, yep. We're establishing the application standards. Here's the concern that was just brought up, the creation of ten parcels. Um, I don't believe there's a, a road standard that applies to this specific uh land division type, so. Perhaps that's something that should go back to four. Um, or some other number that you guys deem appropriate.
Or leave it to ten, then if it's anything over four, they have to have the road standard. Sure, because I know a lot of people, my grandparents passed. Twenty eight grandkids and grand, great grandkids, everything got split between twenty eight. It's, it's, it's not uncommon. Or ten. One, one twenty ninth share, yeah. So I don't know, I, you know, I can understand. Uh, if it's anything over four, then different standards can kick in, but I believe that's how it should be addressed myself.
Okay.
How's that, that ten, you want to leave it at ten?
If, if you leave it at ten, we can go ahead and create standards who have, meaning if it's more than four, then they have to meet the uh. You know, the, the county road standards.
Yeah, or would you just leave it at to four and then deal with that with them?
And I think I'm more have to go that way. If we leave it at ten, then we have to go add additional standards elsewhere to. Like the roads.
Well, we don't have to create standards, I don't think. I think we just apply the same standards that would apply.
So why not just make a subdivision or a short subdivision? Over five and above, five to, five to, yeah.
I think the other reason.
Exception, well, maybe I, if I spoke to you, say, are there exceptions to those standards that we would? I'll say grant, for lack of a better word, in the case of a family subdivision with more than four lots. Are we just talking about the roads? I don't know.
When you pair up this change with. How twelve, six hundred C is now written, which is that restriction on utilizing contiguous land divisions to circumvent the subdivision code. If this is four. Then you'd allow for can, like two and a half or maybe three, so long as you're not creating more than ten parcels or pieces of property. Um, so you'd have this contiguous uh family exemption issue. I think that's where the other number ten came from. It's like, we're already restricting land divisions to ten and then past ten where we're higher, is a higher standard, right? Either by, via short platter, via long platter, or short subdivision or long subdivision, so. Um, it could be handled under a standards, right? I think Matt mentioned um. That, that's another way to do it.
Is your language in there? Uh, I think we took it out as far as uh. You know, have to hold it for two or three years.
Yeah, it used to be in the code that someone receiving the gift had to hold it for three years. It just, it's a, it's a pain to try to regulate because. Someone comes in and says, I bought this from Joe and, and then we have to red flag that saying, well, you're, you, you know, he, Joe didn't own it for three years, so you can't build on it for two. Then they go and start building on it anyways, and then we have to do a stop work order and it's just, it'd be, I can see it becoming a compliance nightmare um. But I, we could, we could craft it, I just know, well, when I talked to Milton about this a few years back, that was the frustration.
See, back, back day, we, when we had that. And I had this argument with uh, not arguing, I had a bet with Daniel. Um, it was two or three years, wherever it was, but back then, it was not, you were not limited to once. In a lifetime.
Oh, right.
And so that's why they had that. So when they gun ahead and said, now you're only allowed a one-time receiving gift. It didn't matter how long it held them.
Okay.
So. I, I'm fine without that intention.
Okay. Okay, so. Uh, the waiver of land division requirements, um. The way we've restructured this code section, this would now require an application of some kind with a review of these standards. So you've added a couple of. Of standards calling back to six two one and six two two. Um, and then with this ex- exception, you wanted to, you wanted me to craft something that made sure that people knew that. If they're in a forty acre zone, they had to meet those zoning minimums. I didn't think it was necessary, but you guys wanted me to craft that, so there it is. Um, and then we're adding not just a legal description, but also a map of where it's supposed to go, so. Okay? Uh, updating a code section. Oh. This is adding twelve, six, two, three. To this standards, uh, this is for boundary line adjustments. So this is an unplatted piece of parcel or piece of property. Six, two, three is like your. So let's say I have an unplatted piece of property, I want to cut down from. Two acres to one acre, like in a. You know, reducing the size, if they're connecting to an urban water system, that's where twelve, six, two, three comes in as those urban services. Um. They would allow them to do that via uh. Boundary line adjustment. I think we've had a couple of those requests and that we have, otherwise you have to make them platted through a. A short, short subdivision or something else, so. Um. So this is the notice of land division procedures, so rather than put it in its own subsection, we're just adding it as F. So again, this is, um, I think Alex helped draft these up. With the prohibitions, just adding the code sections and then uh. The new reference to this, the definitions. Remedy, same thing, uh, code references and naming convention changes. No changes to those subsections, so six, one, six, six, twenty, twenty one and twenty two. Six, twenty three. So it was stated earlier, a member of the public mentioned that we don't have a definition of urban services. What we have is these standards that have to be applied for, or have to be upheld. So six, two, three calls out, um. We do have a definition of urban services, it could be refined and be more specific. Um, I don't think that was brought up. I don't recall if Mr. Frank about, but brought that up, okay? Um, during one of our, our workshops. So what we've done here. Is this is the new lots created through any land division process shall include the sanitary restriction lift. We call out lots as specific to, you know, platted pieces of property, you know, created via a plat as a lot versus a parcel which is unplatted. So that's the only change there, um. This was a discussion regarding the fire standard. This is one that has been constantly, um. I haven't had a single fire. Chief that has agreed with that, um. And we even have a specific. Uh. Section in title eleven under building regulations. Um, that allows the fire chief to waive a plat note that has this note on it, um. Because so many of those fire chiefs have stated that they don't want to use. Any of the um cisterns placed in the ground for individual properties. They'd rather have a large cistern, that's what I've heard recently, large cisterns that can serve a whole subdivision versus individual. So this is a way that a developer or land divider could come in and say, okay, you know, well, after. At building location permit, someone is going to install a two thousand gallon um tank. At the front of the property, so it's kind of kicking that can down the road on the standards versus uh meaning amount outright. Okay? So we had some discussion over the parks and trails, um. We don't have. Uh, a, a county trails plan, so. Removing that barring. Sometime in the future, if a trails plan gets adopted, then I think we should have this in there, but. This has been like a confusing section for people coming in saying, do I need to meet that? Response has been, well, we don't have an adopted trails plan, so you can ignore that code section. So, well, and this aligns with some of the, the policies you guys adopted or recommended option for, um. Talking about giving up a, a public land, so. Think that's it. So no changes to six, two, six, six, two, seven, or twelve dash six, two, three, or six, three. So this gets into renaming preliminary plat to long subdivision. Uh, so you see a lot of these are just code reference changes. For, for whatever reason, there's still a reference to the condominium projects and condominium code was removed, I think, back in twenty twenty. Uh, one or twenty, yeah, I think it's twenty twenty one. Um, looks like somebody missed that, that line there, so. So I think I've caught all of these uh code references. If you see some, please let me know, um. Again, this is now essentially what I've tried to, to capture is have a procedure and the standards for long subdivisions. Have a procedure and standard for short subdivisions and have a procedure and standard for final plats. So right now, in, within this uh chapter or subsection. What we have is final plat buried within it. So now I have moved that to what was the MLD code, which is six point six, I believe. Um, and then everything refers back to that, so. Here's a uh. Then. One other change I added that I don't think we discussed previously, there's one line in here that says discussion may include, so this is um.
Jake, did we lose our zoom?
No, jet, that screen went blank.
It's just the TV went out.
So I don't, I see, I see Zoom on our side here. I don't know why these TVs shut off, so. We can take a recess if you want me to try to turn them on, but I can't promise everything will. I can see the folks on Zoom on my screen. I, I don't have them on yours.
Oh, we're here.
Yeah. Thank you. So. There's some references throughout the subdivision code that refers to the comprehensive plan, comprehensive plan objectives. Comprehensive plan standards, I think there's a couple of those throughout. I talked to Bill recently about this and there's actually a case law. So Lupa doesn't require a subdivision to meet the comprehensive plan, which I think makes total sense because the. The, the code itself should reflect the policies of the comprehensive plan and it shouldn't be used as a, as a standard to review against. Some of those can become somewhat subjective when you look at specific constitutional hearings, so rather than leave that kind of subjective policy um or. You know, guiding document as a, as a standard for review, I think it should be removed um from the subdivision code, so. That's not something I presented to you guys with previously, uh, as I mentioned, there's some case law that, that states. And it clarifies, uh, if I want, if you want me to get you the case, I can ask Bill to send it over to us. Um, unless the county code calls it out, Lupa doesn't require it, essentially was the, the, the end result of that. So six, four, two, which is contents of the application, um, this is where. If somebody is trying to divide a piece of property within the area of impact, they would have to request to be annexed uh into that, into that city. And be rejected by the city and kind of show proof of that attempt, so. I believe I had a consensus from the commission that you guys wanted me to go that route. Um, there are a number of policies that support this type of change. If you pair this up with kind of the diminishing areas of impact, I think it's a fairly decent standard. It is a higher bar. Um, but it'll stop land divisions, especially larger subdivisions. Uh, like adjacent to cities where they're already planning on extending their infrastructure too. So if you look at the new area of impact state law. Six, twelve dash sixty five, twenty three, or twenty six, I don't recall which one, um. It, it. Limits the city's area of impact to areas where they can show that they have infrastructure plans to grow to. And areas that will be an um annex within the next five years. So the way I've been evaluating those and presenting it to the board, which we did the first round, I believe it was five or six applications that came in from different cities. Is showing the annexation history over the last ten years. So some of the cities were really big and now their new proposals, they kicked, they kicked back all but three of them. Um, telling them you're way too big, you don't meet the standard, bring back a smaller area of impact, so. The board's aware of this and I think we're going to see a, a pretty vastly shrinking area of impact. And then by statute, these are be required now to be reviewed by the county and the cities every five years for um review. So, or uh for uh changes to it. As a side note, Clark Fork hadn't been touched, I believe, since nineteen seventy eight. So this new standard of every five years, I, I think is going to be. Beneficial when adding this type of code section in.
I think this, I, I thought we did discuss this, I think this is a good idea.
Okay, uh, Matt brought it up to me, um, he, he asked, did we actually agree to that? And I, I thought we did, so I thought I. Highlight it here again and make sure we understood, okay? So this is a standard that applies specifically to. Preliminary plats, I think it's an antiquated standard that shows. You need someone's name on the face of the preliminary plat. It's not on the final plat contents. I don't know why a decision maker, we need to know that. Susie Smith lives next door and that, that's the status of that, that property, so we've copied the. Sorry, I'm, there we go. We've kind of copy paste it from the final plat contents to align that a little bit better to show the status of the adjoining property so that. If it's part of a named um subdivision or if it's unplatted land, so. And we look through some of these other standards to see if anything else need to be aligned to um. The final plat, kind of. Make those all more cohesive and I didn't see anything. So now we're calling back specifically to six point two, which is the, and this, the design standards to ensure that nobody. Tries to say, well, you don't, you don't tell me I have to meet those standards, so. We're just. Listed outright that that, that's those standards after that. So moving on to the, these are all. Um, some naming convention changes, so there is some rationale and I'll explain it. If you disagree, that's fine and we can modify those again. I updated zoning commission to hearing body and you'll see that throughout whenever it named a specific hearing body to make a decision. Rather than name that hearing body, I just put it as hearing body. If you pair this up with your next um code amendment, so twelve. Uh, AM thirteen, I believe what it is. Uh, we have defined in chapter one, the jurisdiction of each one of those hearings or hearing bodies, so it, it already lists out who can make what decisions. Why reiterate it throughout the code, especially when you, let's say somewhere down the line, the board says, you know, I don't want the hearing examiner to be able to make decisions on subdivisions. So rather than have to change it in forty two places, you only have to change it in one, and that's in chapter one, because that's where jurisdiction is, is outlined.
Makes all sense, right?
Okay. So there was some confusion right now and that's why all subdivisions are going to the zoning commission for recommendation to the board. When chapter one outlines that either the hearing examiner or the zoning commission can make that decision, so there's a conflict in my code already. Um, so you'll see throughout here, there are a number of other uh changes. Let's see.
I have one question for you, Jake.
Yes, sir.
It says the hearing on C, the hearing body, huh, should make the decision after closing public hearing in accordance to sixty five and five. Is that within a certain timeframe?
There is not a timeframe that the, that somebody has to make a decision, like a, not outlining in Lupa. So we don't have a, you know, you're limited to making a decision within thirty days or something like that. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I mean, the way it reads, someone might say, oh, I, at the end of this hearing, I'm going to have my answer.
Well. But there's still the option of that hearing body to not close the hearing.
Yeah, they, they would continue that hearing to another date and time. Um, but by the end of the hearing itself, whether it's on day one or day twelve of that hearing, then they'll have a decision. Um, the other changes throughout here are removing the, the requirement for a, a subdivision. Um, to go to the board accounting commissioners on preliminary flat approval, so by, by Lupa, the board cannot delegate. Its authority to adopt. Ordinances, zone changes, um, or finally approve land division or subdivisions, I believe the way that Lupa reads. Um. So final plats have to be approved by the board and you'll see those presented reg- regularly at the business meetings. So this isn't a final plat, this is a preliminary plat. Um, this is getting some work off of the boards uh back and if you look back to why this code was created. Some board in the past didn't like the decisions coming out of planning and zoning and they said, we can do a better job, so go change the code, if I remember my reading right.
And now just recently, the uh, the board in reviewing some preliminary plats. Has expressed concern that they do not have enough. Information to make good decisions and have, I think, sent back or continued some of those hearings to get more information. So this change from recommend approval to just flat out approve. Where did that come from and do we really think that's going to fly with the board, given that they are seemingly reaching out to grasp. Or control of preliminary plats?
This was an idea that we workshopped, um, I have not spoken with the board about this that I recall directly, so. It's up to the board to agree or disagree with this idea, um. In their hearing, they can take this and say, we don't want to see that and we want this, we rework that we contain, we remain control over it, so.
Um, but you're saying we already workshop this specific wording change?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we discussed this at a previous workshop, so.
Rather than sending a recommendation, preliminary, disapprove it. Let it go ahead, then they get the final.
Okay.
Now.
Hopefully they'll take it.
Yeah, that being said, those on appeal, any one of the decisions by the hearing examiner or the zoning commission goes to the board. So they still retain control on appeal to approve or deny a file. But those are the major changes there, I remember right. Again, changing hearing body throughout from board. Um, this is another change we discussed previously, which is the valid period for how long uh preliminary plat is good for, which uh changing from two years to three. In the last few years, I've noticed a lot of these infrastructures, when they have to be created or bonded for. Developers are taking a pretty long amount of time to construct a low, a road, but there's limited resources and both hu- human capital and others. To construct, so I've seen a lot of. To construct. So I've seen a lot of requests for extensions. So rather than require that, I think we initially had it at four years. And I think we. Uh, maybe that was internal on our side and we changed it back to three. The. Is it the P U D code that'll? P U D code already approves them for three years. I think that's what we got. Okay, the P U D code uh does four years. That's where we started. So we met in the middle at three years.
But an extension is still possible.
Yes.
And it's a one year extension or can that be two?
I'd have to look at the extension code. It's in chapter two. I want to say it's up to two years if I remember right. The board can say, you know, one year or two years or some something in between. Um, so then I reference back here, uh, you know, extension request shall be processed in accordance with that code section in chapter two, which is for extensions. And this is just capturing, um, this is your bonding code. So just capturing the same thing. So a bond is good for three years as well. So. Final plat's good for preliminary plat's good for three years, a bond's good for three years. Let's see. Standards for review, again, capturing that uh hearing body versus uh naming a specific decision maker and then. Taking out the uh recommendation language. And then we added this twelve six four six, which just calls to the new final plat procedures to ensure that. Anybody with a preliminary plat under a long subdivision or short subdivision, you'll see this reiterated a couple of times. Gets goes to twelve six point six, which is the final Platts procedure. So that's where it's being removed as twelve six four six here. So all this, there's a couple of changes to those endorsements and other things. And then this six four nine is being removed entirely. Um, I went and talked to the G I S director. We don't have a problem with people submitting digital Platts. This was added to the code, um, I believe in seventeen, because there were still a number of surveyors that didn't want to submit anything electronically. They had to, they wanted to come in with their paper copy and then it was labor intensive on everyone to scan those in and create a digital copy. It's not a problem we see now. Um, I think everybody, especially after COVID, has just said, yes, we want to do everything digitally. We ramped all that up, so. Um, we don't, yeah, that. So removing that, I think is makes sense. So this uh again changes a lot of these to short subdivisions. So a lot of it is just naming conventions. And then clarifying that it's uh ten or fewer lots uh being created. Hmm. We. This kind of a little more ambiguous permit required section, we've relabeled into one of the other. Uh restrictions that we or other code language that we drafted when looking at the minor land division code uh potential changes. So this is lands divided by a short subdivision are not eligible for further division. By a short subdivision process, a restriction shall be noted on the plat for the divisions of any lot created via S or by short subdivision. Must proceed through a subdivision. I should say long subdivision process.
So so if someone has.
You guys, you guys threw me off when you changed it to subdivision to long subdivision. I missed some.
So if you have a short plat.
Yes, sir.
And those lots are X minus size, and then they get different on higher density.
Yeah.
And a person wants to change one lot in there, replat it.
Yep.
It's split into, you're going to make them go through the full long subdivision.
Yep.
They don't have to sub, that's just for that parcel. They don't have to do anything for any any other parcels.
Correct.
It's.
That's not the way it's been, no. So. Let's see. Well, it it's kind of a mixed bag depending on how you want to look at it. So we don't have a codified language to clarify how we want to deal with. Internal contiguous land division. So land being divided and divided and divided again all on one piece versus next to each other divided, so. Okay. But again, we're calling back to six point two for the design standards. Um. I think we discussed all of these. Changing the naming convention of area impact. We're calling back to the the noticing standards of twelve dash two six eight. So I'm deleting the three hundred foot boundaries because there's a change to chapter two that clarifies that. I've noticed throughout some of these code sections, they like to reiterate, copy paste some standards throughout rather than referencing that code. So I've tried to capture those. And if I've missed any, please highlight those and let's capture that on your recommendation to the board, so. Okay. So removing short plat, going to short subdivision for the naming convention. Again, removing the specific. So this here is a standard that says, so short subdivisions are administratively approved or denied. They're decided by by planning staff. Um, so with that, you have the option, if something becomes. Goes from black and white into gray, that you can um recommend. That the a hearing body conduct the a public hearing pursuant to, you know, noticing standards and whatnot. So that is the same or similar standard to what you see in the administrative variances, where if it gets kind of hairy, you can say, we're going to go to hearing with this instead of make a decision on it. And again, I would send that to the applicable hearing body, which in this case I probably would be the zoning commissioner, the hearing examiner if we have one. Hmm. So this is referencing back to uh sixty five thirty five, which is kind of a more. Important code section recently, given the Supreme Court case decisions, or rather than try to summarize or. Um, copy paste that Lupa standard, it's referenced back to it. Capturing that three year versus two year clause again. Extension process reference. The appeal, rather than copy paste some kind of a appeal language, just reference back to two six one, which is the administrative appeals. And then final plat, again, referencing just the final plat section, which is now six point six. Um. I know we have a couple of changes throughout here. They were fairly minor. Um, it's on endorsements. So we've had at least one city that says, you know, for a a land division inside of area impact. So rather than approval, I think that's the way it's currently read, approval by the city. The cities don't have a standard to review and a. A re- review and approve our subdivisions. So I've had at least one city. Say they refuse to approve a subdivision. They want to acknowledge that, you know, we saw this, so. Trying to cater to them a little bit, and really they aren't, and they do have a good point. So it's really acknowledgement that it this plat that's being platted is within the area of impact.
Can I shoot back and just say, I don't have this on here?
Okay.
Go back up just just, I just wanted to read something. Thank you. When we say wetland boundaries, uh. Should we add any language on there to determine that that's actually delineate delineate wetland boundaries?
You know, I didn't want to get into environmental standards with any of this. I think we're, we've got our mouth pretty full right now. Um, if you're going to change wetland boundaries in chapter six, then I think you should. We should have another discussion regarding chapter seven.
I mean, who's determined those wetland boundaries if if. Because you can't use the US.
Chapter seven has like what triggers a wetland delineation already.
Okay.
So um and it a subdivision is one of those. So those those standards apply to subdivisions. So this would be a a result of what chapter seven, you know, that those standards being applied to a a subdivision. Is what's going to be shown on the plaque.
Okay. Reference.
That's not a bad idea to reference as far as standards review that chapter seven may be triggered or something along those lines. I just just.
Yeah, yes, the question. Yeah.
But that's a, it's a good point. And that's what I I've tried to be consistent about that throughout this code revision. So I did go through chapter seven to make sure that. The naming convention in there didn't need to change, and I didn't see anything that needed to be changed. I didn't consider adding a reference to it. So that's a good point, Don.
Hey.
I think we should have a further discussion, given the the policies, and I hope they get adopted. Um, by the board, I think it's next week. Um. It's on the twenty seventh, that hearing. It's a busy day. Um. So given some of the policies and how wetlands are described there, we should, I think, have a further discussion on. Uh, the wetland code itself in chapter seven, so. Okay. Think that's all I got. I think we added a if applicable to the lien holder. So not assuming that everybody has a lien holder on their property. So try to add a little more inclusiveness to incorporate for different different types of land divisions. Um, procedures for preliminary plants. Again, this is just a copy paste we saw previously. Um. And we're established, oh, and it's just the procedure that we're going to follow for that. So this is the removal of six sixty, six sixty one, which is our minor land division procedures. We saw no, no proposed changes to six seventy, which is our first section of lot line adjustments. Um, changes throughout six seven one. These are code reference changes to some of these code sections moved around a little bit. And six points. Six point six is the final final plat subdivision, so our final final plat. Um, reference. This would add a standard review of six twenty two and six twenty three, which is the same stuff we saw on the in the boundary line adjustment, adding that to the lot line adjustment. No changes to six seven two, moving on to six seven three. This is your final plat for um lot line adjustments and minor rotational changes, rather than have a different standard. Just referencing back to six point six, which is the final plat procedures for all of our platter lands now. Moving on to chapter eight, so we don't have a definition of a remainder. We have it kind of referenced throughout. There's a couple of times where we refer to it. And. What a remainder generally is, is I start with a parent parcel, I divide off some pieces of it, and then I have a remainder. It makes them, it's pretty simple. I've had people try to use or surveyors or project reps try to use this to say. Oh, I I'm creating four lots and I have a remainder lot, or I have a remainder parcel. So it's really what they end up with is five pieces of property.
Right.
All at five acres. So I've kind of put my foot down to say, you can't have a remainder. That, you know, you're essentially creating five pieces of property. So I think the the happy medium is. If you have, if it meets the waiver of land division, which is that twenty acre requirement, I think that that could be considered a a. A remainder, right? Because we already have standards for review, so this is codifying that that concept. Saying, okay, if your remainder is twenty acres or bigger and it meets that twelve six one three standard, then um. You know, under wa- waiver of land division, then you can have your remainder. Okay. This keeps pieces, yeah, I think you guys understand the the problem. It's it's unique. It weird stuff comes up through the planning department every day and again, so this is trying to eliminate that argument we've had. Okay, so this is a definitions. Believe we've left these. Intact, um, and maybe only changed a couple of reference code sections. Um, this is the same as what they were uh in the the in chapter six. What's that? Oh, thank you. So we added I, which is lands uh under six one three is not considered a subdivision. That's your unplatted land divisions.
So the subdivision hit, the 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 trigger mechanism there has to be platted.
Correct.
Yeah.
So we also have a definition here of what a long subdivision and a short subdivision are. So this this really clarifies eleven or more platted lots, you know, ten or fewer platted lots. And that's all, that's all of them.
Um. In chapter eight. Go to the definition of lot, if you could, please. You know where I'm going with this?
Yep.
So yeah, yeah, we okay, that's all I'm gonna have.
That's fine.
Okay, no, are we okay with this language without changing the language of lot?
Maybe not.
I don't, I don't think so.
And it's not, uh. Let's see. Lot states. There's actually two part, there's two problems now that you mention this. So lot is a platted piece of land, which. Is part of a subdivision recorded in a book of Platts in the office of the of the county reporter. That's fairly straightforward. Where it gets gray is in eight hundred, now that you mention this. Um, where under thirteen, uh, I can share my screen. I'm sorry. Twelve six hundred, uh, which is like how we general rules of language throughout. Here it says the word lot includes lot, parcel, or tract.
Yeah.
So when we we try to delineate between a lot and a parcel, platted, unplatted. And a tract is like generally common ownership or, you know, some piece within a an H O A, like those are tracks, right? It's limited on use to common law, so. Um. We have a definition of specifically what a lot is, and then here it's more vague. A lot is also these things kind of. Curious of the definition of parcel is now. An unplatted piece of land.
Piece of land, right. What is that, a claw?
It's a piece of land.
Piece of land.
You rather chunk of land?
Area of land.
Area.
I don't know, it's just, it's just. A lot of phrase, I know it's accepted and everybody knows what it means, but it's just weird. Piece of land. And it's changed, you know, six or seventies. They will say, you know, so they will say acreage. Yeah, I mean. It's changed just the area component, so.
Yeah.
It's not just um. Right, what's in, okay, and the platters. Area of ladder.
Okay, any any other questions before we go to public comment?
Other comments? Questions?
I should ask, did I generally capture what you guys had in mind? I know there are some additional changes in there, and I think I highlighted them for you. If there's anything egregious, please call it out.
I think I think you did a great job. Yeah. Oh, bells my outside here, so it's.
The the next, the next code sections that we're looking at are uh the next amendment, which just changes the chapters one and two. Those remain a hundred percent intact to what I presented to you guys previously. So I should have sent those to hearing before. I had my hands full. Capturing this stuff and a couple of other things, so I just. Yeah, I think it makes sense, given some of these code sections are being referred to and changed to run those at the same time, or at least get them adopted around the same time.
Yeah, well, it's it's all this uh. This up for the comment.
Hi, uh, Linda, what we're water camp president. I have a question if it's on over your lucky note, but I missed one of the meetings in between, so. Is there a place where I can go to see what the new definition is? What are the like, it's in there, they naturally sub of short. Land vision, but it's short, uh. Subdivision versus long divisions. What are the things that are different? Like, is there like payable or be pointed to a document? Or because this was partial, which I appreciate. I know it's a lot of work, so.
So this this revision is found under the current projects page.
Right, I saw that. I have that.
Okay.
But I don't see. Like, I think. Don't I need to read the whole thing for each one, the whole definition for each one, so I can actually see what's different? What puts the purpose of the short subdivision versus long? Doesn't have to be planted.
So both are platted.
So what's different?
The only, the major difference I would say is who the decision maker is. So short subdivisions are decided by planning staff, long subdivisions have to go through a hearing process.
But all the other requirements that are.
Yep.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yeah, yes.
So the the definition is how many lots are created.
Right, I see that. Can I have, ask them one question? So um, as an older person, I do greatly appreciate this one plus. Scott's concerned about being able to pass down land to family and relatives. And um, it's something that I would want to do in the future as well. I would also say though, as a county, and again, this could be ignorance on my part, so I need to this, but. How how much do you want to pack up the land? So to speak, I mean, you guys have a difficult situation of evaluating that, but that's something that take into account. Thank you.
Well, if if I may just make up, any, any, any piece of property that's split, whether it's through the Meyer, well. A more minor land division, but family exemption, short plat, short subdivision, they all have to meet the minimum acreage when it's on their city.
I understand that. Well, thank you.
Which always wasn't the case.
Unless there's an exception.
Right. Alright, so uh, do we?
You got one on line to uh. You got one to handle, Lynn.
Okay. Somebody online?
It's me, Dave Bowman. I I'm just gonna say, there is a lot to unpack here and and I haven't. Been able to be through, go through all of it thoroughly. I'm going to submit comments, but I'm gonna. Rather than try to clutter this up, I'm gonna get them in writing and get them to you guys before the hearing and uh I'll get them as quickly as I can. So uh, that's all. Thanks.
We'll look forward to that, Dave.
So I believe for the minute, this comment is no comment. Is that what I got?
Well, yeah, but comments forthcoming.
Alright, uh, any other comments? But now we'll close that part of this. Um, workshop. Well. You know, the definition of subdivision, I don't sound that, because I pulled up here and it says. Any division of land as set forth in the definition of subdivision is section six eleven of this title. It appears that we're wiping six eleven completely clean.
Then this one. Are you in our? Where are you at?
Uh, I think I'm in this proper one that you just had up on the screen, uh.
What, where are you at? Sorry.
Um, I think we read the current. Um. As well, the, the, the post is, we're gonna reserve twelve, six, eleven is gonna be reserved, we're not gonna have. Where I read this, we're not gonna have a six, eleven, is that correct? But if you look at the definition of subdivision, under uh eight, twelve dash eight nineteen for subdivision, it says any divisional land as set forth. In the definition of subdivision in section twelve dash six, eleven.
That must be old. That's the old, he's, he's got a new definition, right?
Oh, okay.
Very bottom of.
At the very bottom.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, it's in chapter eight, so that, you're reading the strikeout. And then chapter eight is moving that definition to the definition section.
Okay.
So I, I think I removed that kind of circular, you know, issue.
Oh, it's very long. There and then, alright, shall we go through uh, chapter one and two?
Yeah, let me present this, I gotta switch our zoom again. Yeah. So again, we've workshop this before and there's no changes to this, um. I can go through and kind of go give you the changes. This process started. April, I wanna say, with the board. Um, I had a couple of, couple of edits to clarify, some of it was driven by. By legal counsel on, you know, jurisdiction and some split vote concerns when the, when it gets to a board level and you only have two commissioners that can vote, like. We've never had that before and now it's come up a couple of times, um, where you have a split vote on something, so. Um, and then some others came from the board during some workshops. I presented this to the planning commission, you made one change to this. I don't recall exactly what it was, I wanna say it was part of the variance procedures or one of the standards there, um, but I don't have that off the top of my head. And then the other major changes here are, are on noticing and the noticing standard, so what I noticed. Thank you.
Fun included.
Fun included. What I realized or found out or noticed uh was that the standards were different depending on what application. And then you had a generic twelve. Two, six, eight, I believe what it is, which said these are our noticing standards, but if you went to. You know, different code sections, it referenced it incorrectly, so it looked like somebody had changed. Six or two, six, eight, but didn't update special use permits, for example, or, you know, something on appeal or something else. So rather than try to copy paste throughout, it's deleting the, the reference and making a reference to six, two, eight. So those are some of the major, major changes here.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
At one twenty-two D jurisdiction. Says the vice, which will also place a judicial hearing. For app, an issue, okay, so that. It says however, it shall not consider other side of the setting back. So my question is, we, we throw back and forth on whether or not. What we do is quasi judicial and the facility with the car to applicant.
Yep.
Uh, so, as. Our view, as you have the prosecutor's office changed? Or are we saying? They don't care what they say, we're gonna make it quasi judicial, but how are we gonna do that? Cause at this, making quasi judicial means we have to do more complete statement, right?
Reason statement, yes.
No. Cause it, well. If we're calling it a quasi judicial, then yes, it would have to be a reasoned statement when looking at those, which I think is appropriate. Now. As with every attorney, it's rare that I get a black and white answer from Bill, so. Everything is up to interpretation and somewhat gray. Uh, so he, we generally, and it, you look throughout the state. Um, decisions on comp plan map amendments never get challenged to district court because. The legislative body, uh, you know, the, or the judicial body deems those as legislative in nature.
Yeah, they can go for judicial review.
They, they generally don't go for judicial review. I don't believe they're covered under Lupa either. And I have to double check, so. I think, I think when Lupa lists out. You know, the types of things that can be challenged under its provisions, comp plan map amendments are not part of that. That being said, generally you don't have a lot of applicant-driven comp plan map amendments. Usually that is a legislative body making changes like we just did with the comp plan map. So we kind of had this rush over the last few years of uh people wanting to change our, change the map itself. And then we have an application process for that, so. And um, Bill reviewed this and said, yes, I like the way that's written, that's okay. Well, I, I've talked to other planners um throughout the state and in other states and. It's a varied review or very responsive, whether or not an applicant initiated comp plan map amendment is legislative or, or quasi judicial. I believe that it should be quasi judicial because the applicant should be protected. In a decision make, or in, in the decision making process from expertise and conflict of interest and what. Which typ- typically, even for comp plan map amendments, you guys call for con- conflicts and expertise, so. That to me is why we should deem those quasi judicial, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
And according to this, they're defined as quasi judicial.
They would be, yeah.
Which means again, we're back to needing a reasoned statement for those. When would we not require a reasoned statement for quasi judicial hearing?
It's not a loop off, right?
So. That's a good question. I think I need to further review whether or not we'd have to do a reasoned statement. I probably, this would be my gut reaction, so. Um. I'd have to look at sixty-five, thirty-five and then sixty-five, oh, eight and nine, I believe, so. I don't have the answer off the top of my head.
Quiet on the map, so.
What's that?
Pretty quiet on the map itself.
What do you mean?
Well, there's no. There's no real discussion, no presentation of a, the map that reflects the destination to land use activation. Says, and it concluded, oh, included that.
A comprehensive plan map, yeah, it's not required by, well, it's kind of required by statute. The comp plan map itself, it's kind of alluded to in the comp plan, um, but yeah, you, you're right.
So it doesn't.
What's, what's interesting is that when you look at the annexation laws for cities, one of those refers to, it has to be within the, the bounds of the comprehensive plan map. So you have like other, it doesn't have to, it's one of the ways you can annex as a city. Claire was recently, Claire Marley was recently talking about that, like huh, that's interesting, cause it's a compact map actually required by Lupa, so. And we know Lupa's antiquated and less sections that definitely need to be changed up to this, so. Okay. Um. Other questions on that section? Uh, so zoning commission. The board uh did not want the zoning commission to have the authority to appoint a hearing examiner. So that's what that changed there. They wanted to retain that themselves, um, yeah. And pulling out chairman to just chair, I think that's appropriate. We've had. At least one not guy on a commission in the past. So looking at the procedures for amendments of the title, uh, this is that noticing standard I mentioned before, so you'll see this throughout, referring back to twelve, two, six, eight. Um. This is removing the requirement to make a, make a recommendation within thirty days. Sometimes it takes longer than that, um. Again, I think this was the same code section that was added. When you had the changes that required short or uh subdivisions to go to the board. Uh, they added these restrictions onto the zoning commission, so. Um, we publish hearing notices in twelve, two, sixteen and twelve, two, two, four, again, referring back to two, six, eights. Um. This is a copy paste out of Lupa, but we don't have front yard, side yard, room yard, or do we have uh height of building requirements? Or limitations, so removing those out of the variant standards. Two, three. I heard mumber, mumbling.
Yeah, you're, I am mumbling.
Yeah.
Can read it.
Okay.
So you cannot ask for a variance from a front yard setback?
You can add a, you can ask for variance from a setback. We don't have a specific front yard setback.
Copy, okay.
Right, so we just remove front yard, side yard, rear yard, cause we don't have specific front, side and rear. It's just street setbacks and road, you know, and uh property lines. Same thing with height of building, if someone came in and applied for. Height setback or a, a height variance, I don't know what I would do with it.
You would grant?
Sure, I'd process it and come in and say, there's no standard, please approve, I don't know, yeah. Um, twelve, two, three, five, again, this is just another standard throughout on one of the, the noticing. So adopting that two, six, eight. Um, administrative variances, the, the board felt that the, that the planning staff had too much leeway and um. In approving or denying or deciding on a thirty percent variance, so they'd wanna reduce that down to twenty percent. Um, then again, just modifying that front yard, side yard, rear yard and height of building to conform to the variant standards. Or the, the revised variance, um, removing city out of area of impact, cause that's what the state did. Um. And then again, changing that noticing standard to two, six, eight. You can see it's throughout chapter two of these noticing, and then it is various. Let's see. So this is giving planning staff a little bit longer to evaluate, um, a. So the process for administrative variances, we still send out agency and, and neighbor notices, and then after that comes back at the conclusion of that. They chose seven days, we've had a hard time sometimes getting within that seven days, so we're asking for a few more working days. Ten days is two working weeks. Oh, I should have named that in the announcements earlier, we're now open Monday through Friday, nine to five, so that'll be clear as to how many working days we have, so. Cause some people have asked that question in the past, so. Do Fridays count for you guys' days? And yes, cause we do have planners in the office those days, but now that's kind of a nullified argument. Uh, procedures for special use permits, um. I don't know why the board is listed as the decider on this. And maybe hearing examiner or zoning commission should be modified to hearing body. You can see I worked on this one a few months ago before I worked on the chapter six changes. Um, yes, sir.
Especially for me, I, I know it's kind of synonymous with CUP.
No, it's different.
It is different.
Yep. In our code it is, in state code it's synonymous.
Okay.
What's the distinction in our code, if you don't mind me asking now that you brought it up?
We've only had one in like a decade, so if I remember right, it's, it's when you don't have a permitted use. Um, and you want to have that use in a short duration of time. So take, um, I wanna run a marathon or have a rally race on my property, but racetracks aren't allowed. But I'm gonna do it for like a month and I'm gonna hold three events, so you have a special use permit to get that permitted. As, as a short duration of time, um, yeah. So you, you put guardrails on it, but it's not gonna last, you know, forever, right? It's not a racetrack that's gonna be there forever and ever. Does that help?
Yep.
Thank you. But what Matt is saying, or Mr. Len Scott here is saying, isn't state code, it calls out special use permits? And if, and then if you look at state law or um statute, gosh, case law, special use permits and conditional use permits are synonymous. Um, so in our code, we have a, have clarified this separate and different. Administrative appeals, so there's been some confusion in the past as to how fast an administrative appeal has to get before the board. So this is decis- decisions made by the planning staff, whether that's administrative variance, a short subdivision or something else entirely. So once that's received, um, we have ten days to schedule that and it has to be um held within. You know, no sooner than fifteen days and no later than forty-five days. We have this thirty day window to have this meeting with the board for them to make a decision. This really clarifies so that we're not holding it too soon to say, oh, I'm not available, um. Uh, and then not too late where they're just sitting around for three or four months, so they, gives them a window and, and much time to expect to be um seen in front of the board. We do like having some time rather than five or ten days, having thirty is really great, especially during the summer months when the board gets really backed up with. Board of equalization and budget hearings and other things.
So I didn't ask the question then, but talked earlier about. Which one was it? It's a, it's a planning department director that says, no, this is, this is beyond our review, we need to have a hearing.
Yep.
Can that decision be appealed to this?
Yeah, so not through administrative appeals, it would be an appeal of that, which is your next section here, uh, two, six, two, and so.
What's the recourse?
Yeah, so appeal of a zoning commission or hearing examiner decision, so those get appealed to the board.
Well, no, I'm saying one that.
Oh.
Does fall to the department. And you say, this is beyond our, our expertise, if we're uncomfortable, we need to go to a hearing, that's a decision.
Sure.
Can that be appealed under?
Oh, that's a, maybe, probably. If our decision is we want a hearing with the zoning commission.
Right.
And then they wanna appeal that to the board.
Yeah.
Probably, I would say.
You know. I don't wanna go there, so.
Yeah.
I've heard a few years, see.
Yeah.
I suppose it could happen in today's.
Yep, probably. That's a good, yeah, yeah, that's. See, yeah, cause what, what he's saying is a hearing examiner has the option of recommending the zoning commission hold a hearing, so could that be appealed to the board?
Sure.
Same thing, cause it's their final decision is recommend a hearing, so I think we've landed on yes, that could get appealed to the board. I don't know if it's ever.
If it's not the case itself, by itself, it's that decision.
It's the decision of, yeah.
Well, it's inappropriate, or it is inappropriate, go ahead.
That is odd. These are all like thought experiments, cause I don't think it's ever.
Gotta wring the towel dry.
So two, six, two, it's calling out, um, adding zoning commission, I'm not sure why or when that got deleted, um, from the, the header there. Of the title, and then this is clarifying the, the board's tie vote procedure. And I did add this in a couple of spots, so one, it's on this appeal and then in reconsideration. So it's saying that, um. In the event of a tie vote or inability to gain a corm due to conflict of interest or ab- or abstention. Uh, the failure to gain an affirmative action by the board is considered final decision of denial. Uh, the appeal and the underlying decision shall be deemed the final decision of the board, so you'll see that copied here as well. So. I think that covers it uh on appeals. So let's say, take a subdivision, for example, if the zoning commission approves a subdivision and it goes to the board. And two of the board members have been, happened to be related to that applicant or something of those effects, that they have a conflict of interest. Um, then the underlying decision being the approval would be the one that stands. Um. Again. Referencing two, six, eight. Yep. It was referencing back to that. Application procedures in two, six, eight, so this is that code section we keep referring to, so. Um, we're adding a specific provision for broadband. Cause that has a different noticing standard, so we're calling that as like a se- exception, so applications. Which involve broadband infrastructure shall be processed in accordance with Idaho code sixty-seven, sixty-five, forty. That's kind of a stopgap procedure right now to make sure, one, that planners don't miss it. And two, that broadband applicants understand that we're gonna follow that statute. It's somewhat redundant, we have to follow it, but I think it's good to codify. That being said, I think you guys have heard presentations by at least Mr. Donkey, um, that the board is entertaining, um, options to. Further develop a um cell tower broadband infrastructure code section. So I believe they're narrowing down and wanting a, an attorney to. Um, to draft that code section, so I'm sure they'll reference back to this code section as well to, to the state statute as well, so. Um, that being said, moving on to. Noticing, so the big, the big changes here are. Um, referencing back to sixty-five, oh, nine and sixty-five, eleven, and then adding an additional fifteen days. So effectively, this would be a thirty day notice for any quasi judicial, um, land use action. And then. Noticing for mailers to the neighbors or surrounding property owners, so it would change based on the zone of the subject property. Um, we looked at other ways to do this, um. But I think this is probably the most straightforward way to do it. The board wanted to capture roughly the same number of people, um. On any given notice, and given that, you know, you have twenty and forty acre zoning. The, the notice might only hit three or four peoples, they wanna be able to capture a bigger group that may be affected by a land use action, so that was kind of the thought process behind that.
You know, Jane, the only question I have regarding this is in, in, in Lupa, oh, nine and eleven. You know, it, it states if it has to go to more than two hundred people, you don't have to do the, the specific notice.
Yep.
But here, it says notice shall include publication, posting and mailing notice to the property owner's purchase of record. So it's, if, if, if we're going off loop, and it says that it's gonna affect more than two hundred people. However, that next sentence may conflict with that, if that, it still has to be mailed, specific notice. Even if there's more than two hundred, you understand what I mean?
Yeah, so maybe the reference back to sixty-five, eleven could be modified in that code section to say.
For at pursuant to sixty-five, eleven. For at pursuant to sixty-five eleven.
Yeah, I'd say pursuant pursuant to sixty-five eleven notice shall be provided to.
Yeah.
Or something like along those lines.
I think that'd be good.
I think making a minor edit there, you guys could do at a hearing next week as a recommendation for. So this is modifying a little bit, applications that are within the area of impact. Just accordance in accordance with the provisions of this subject chapter, so the applicable to that area of impact agreement. That is, if if a city comes in and establishes a. Or convinces the board and inside their agreement to have a longer noticing. That that is actually pulled out of state statute to notice the cities of something, a land use action inside the ECI, so area of impacts. But the board has approved now three of them, but theirs is all a thirty day notice, which is already what we're doing, so. It's kind of redundant, but if if one of those, given we have to change this every five years. These area of impacts, if one of those gets to a longer noticing, we have to make sure we capture that and follow that. That agreement.
You have a reference to sixty-five eleven.
In where? E?
Yeah.
Yes. I don't, I think what Mr. Lynn Scott's bringing up is that it could be better defined as to when we're gonna send a notice out, so sixty-five eleven. States that if the notice is gonna go to more than two hundred people, then it can go in the paper twice rather than being mailed to all those people. The only time this comes into effect is high dense areas such as Schweitzer, so if you have something in the in the smack dab in the middle. And you hit, you know, four hundred, four hundred homes or on the edge of a city limit, and you hit a whole bunch of homes. You can put it in the paper twice versus mailing to all those folks, so. And I don't believe I brought that up to the board, and maybe they do want the notice being mailed to all those potentially affected folks, so.
Well, that would conflict with Lupa. When especially, you know, in that prior sentence, we we reference it, but you know, of course with requirements. I would turn around and say, oh, except.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
But it it allows. It allows, you know, for the paper. Sixty-five eleven says if no suspect, two or four more people.
But it doesn't require that you not do it.
I don't know, you have to pull that, you have to read it. It is something I noticed that.
I don't, I don't think anyone's gonna argue on how much we notice, I think. Lupa sets the standard, if we want to notice more than that, I don't think there's a problem with it. But it's a it's a good argument to entertain at least. So the other change, pretty significant here. Governing body makes a final decision, rather than a five working days or five days. Changing it to forty-five days, which is a huge window, and I I I appreciate. That change, but given what. What we have to do now after a decision is made and crafting up a reasoned statement and like how substantial those can be. I we need to refine our decision making process and any time to do that post hearing, so. The the goal on the planning department side is we craft those up and present it at the to to the board at a future meeting. For them to adopt or approve the the. You know, I've been talking too long, I'm losing my words. The reasoned statement, so they they will review it and say, no, we didn't mean that, or we didn't say that, you captured wrong, you know, change it to this. So then that is being approved by the board, right now we have five days to craft that up and we get really tight on those five working days, pretty regularly.
This will type, but I'm just thinking of all the.
Yeah.
All the discussion now with this whole housing thing and saying, well, it takes too long to get stuffed up. That's 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 one of the background things that's always coming, it takes too long, too much code, too much, too much requirement, too much restriction. Is this gonna? You think this will bounce?
We'll see if Lupa changes, I think until then, we need to be a little more permissive on ourselves and our decision making process, so.
I agree.
If Lupa change, so what I've seen in some other states is like from the time you. From the time you deem it complete, you have like a hundred and twenty days or a hundred and fifty days to complete the entire process, your administrative review. You know, for whatever hearings and appeals, so you have to like work backwards and hit all these timelines to make sure it goes to hearing. I could see something like that coming into effect, which would definitely affect this curve section here.
Yeah, I think that's one of the things.
So those are my plans on how I I, the goal is to get it back within two weeks, two to three weeks to the to the decision making. Or to the applicants.
Yeah.
So we say we hold a hearing on a Tuesday, they make their final decision. And then we crafted the written, the decision letter and the written statement that goes back to the board to ratify, approve, they make their changes to it, we send it out the next day. So.
Yeah.
When I talk, when I, there's some communication with the other planning directors throughout the state on this, and some of. Some of them don't even have a window, they have to read, do the written statement within, so they're pretty liberal, especially on the really heated files where. They want to make sure that they're crossing all their Ts and Ds off their eyes. And making sure that they're capturing the the full reasoned statement on the board.
Hey, any other questions of? Okay, we'll open up for a public comment. Or anybody else online?
David, Michelle and Karen.
No answers.
Okay. Well, let's go then to.
Title twelve, chapter three. Where do I find that?
I don't know.
We're expecting speaking. Which one of these are we referred to?
Yeah.
Well.
Okay. Planning Commission documents, there's one that says draft chapter three for changes.
What's the latest? First year.
Dated like July eighth.
About one that has Eric's comments on it, so the one where he went through.
There's one that's that has it as eight, five, twenty-five, I believe it's that one, okay.
Okay.
But if you guys are all gonna open that, then I have to open a new one.
Let me, let me just raise a kind of an issue. That's rolling around in my head, it is. Since the. Word has not implemented, has not adopted. Land use component. Or the implementation component. How much time should we be spending on these?
And perhaps I can answer part of that, because what I've heard in the last, since we last met, is two things that are, I think are maybe pertinent to your question, Alan, one is that. Most recently, Commissioner Donkey and the other commissioners seemed to agree that they recognize we probably shouldn't be pressing too far ahead with some of these changes. Until they get the land use implementation, land use component itself done. They very clearly acknowledge that most recently. And as one alternative to pressing too much further ahead in this area, where they've said it might not be worthwhile to do that. Seeing pretty clear that they're now gonna be looking for a glossary. And it, but most recent meeting, it seems like a glossary for the whole. Comprehensive plan and right, maybe an appendix, it's gonna be the glossary that's gonna capture all these. Words that we've discussed. A long time, so. On the one hand, I think they acknowledge there may be a pause in doing too much more down this particular lane, and two, maybe we. If we don't want to do that, then maybe we start to think about going back and. Considering if we want to start on the glossary while we wait to catch up.
Well, I think they want to add that to the land use component that you guys have already recommended, so I don't think it would be. I guess it it depends on how they land, I I believe that's what I heard last time.
We ought to have a discussion about that, because my personal opinion is that's not the approach I would recommend. I I agree with with Eric, I think. I mean, I think we do need a the glossary, but I think it should reflect the entire comprehensive plan, not just one component. Because a lot of these terms we're gonna find are used in multiple components, so I'm not sure it makes sense that stick a glossary on one component. And I and I agree that, I mean, to answer Alan's original question, I don't think we should be pushing too hard down these. This particular. Project until the land use component and you can. And it also seemed like we didn't really hear him say this with so many words the last time we had a workshop with the board, but. My judgment was they were putting a higher priority on getting the glossary done. I mean, they contemplated, some of some of them were contemplating withholding approval of those components until a glossary was was available. So to me. I mean, ultimately, I guess I'd look for their guidance, but to me, that would be a better use of our time.
So from the last.
In the next short while.
Yeah, that's a big element, right? It's like three meetings left for some of you. So the board has asked me to schedule a series of workshops, I've scheduled. Two with three more like penciled in right now, so I think they're gonna do five. Workshops all on the land use component, I think what the Commissioner Domke indicated, or I think from the last hearing, I think it was the twelfth. I don't know. Three workshops to discuss the text and then two workshops to discuss the map. And then with a final draft completed by mid-October for a hearing by mid-November. So they wanted to get it done before the holiday season, that was the, that was the direction I got. So I backwards planned from there and penciled in a whole bunch of workshops. Say that again? Did I send you guys an email with all those? I was hoping I can tell you, I already told you. I know it's the twenty-eighth is the first one, so next Thursday. Will actually be gone, but Alex is gonna run it, it'll be great.
Twenty-eight, what time?
That is at one thirty, all of them I think are on Thursdays at one thirty, so the twenty-eighth, followed by the fourth at one thirty. Fourth of September, and that the penciled in right now is the eleventh of September, and I think that one we've solidified. Yeah, there was a potential conflicting land use hearing, but that got canceled, and then. I think we took the next week off. Yeah.
And is there all workshops or they say they want a workshop with us?
I have it, I have them listed as both, the board and the planning commission, in case a form of the planning commission shows up, so. I should have sent you guys an email, I apologize, so I will give you guys an email with all these dates. And then. Yeah, so then the twenty-fifth of September at one thirty, which is also a Thursday, and then the second of October, which is also a Thursday. Couple of, the first two of those, the agenda is already posted, and I'll post the rest of them this week.
I will not be, I will not be here on point. Be in an airplane.
I'll be in a car when I get there.
I'll be, yeah.
My wife wants to go see the ocean, so.
Oh.
That's what it's gonna be.
That's it, eleven twenty-eighth is one thirty?
Yeah.
All of them, they were all at one.
One thirty to three, so we'll have an hour and a half on each one of these.
So it's basically every Thursday except for the eighteenth.
Correct.
The board is aware that. After September, they're gonna have a different planning.
Yep. Applications are due Friday at noon, I think I said that before, I'll say it a couple of times.
Comment from the door.
And.
Well, you know, I I. I probably don't know how approached it was. At that workshop, I requested that they give us a list. You know, they seem to be hung up on. Sort of this firms or whatever.
We've got definitely an handful of terms that are have been. Enters sold in months, but it could be doesn't.
There was a suggestion that we use the. Finding associated.
Yeah, the APA dictionary.
Dictionary, I don't have that.
I can send it to you guys.
The members of the public, I'm sure all have that, so that would be very handy for that.
Well, we could also, we could also publish that on our website, the APA dictionary is also very inclusive of urban terms. So like city, city, I mean, APA is generally focused on city related land use, but. Some of them are decent.
A place to start. Lot of it may not apply to a rural county like water county, but. At least you got something to start with.
It does call high density anything. Five acres or less, that's what it considers, it's not, it doesn't define high density, low density, but if you look throughout, there's a. Couple of references and one of them refers to anything five.
Five acres is a high density.
Five acres and less is high density, which I thought was really interesting, given the APA is generally like more dense built up, not out, so.
Yeah. One of the recommendations.
Could be, yeah, maybe something we can work with.
Yeah. It it's fairly inclusive, so.
It's also, you know, high density, low density is a relative term.
Yep.
So. It's high density to some person.
Well, I've heard many, many times, a lot of people in this county do not consider a five acre. Parcel lot as rural.
Well, they never be satisfied with the.
Oh, I know, that's what I'm saying, five acres or less.
I I would like to see that.
Sure, I can send it out to you guys, I have a PDF of it, I'd be happy to.
One of the recommendations that came up that I thought was a good ones, somebody in the public mentioned that, you know. It'd be great if we could use like the APA as kind of the standard, just defer to that. But given that there's likely to be some unique definitions that unique to this county. That we maybe think about creating some definitions that we want to be particular. After we looked at the APA, perhaps we find that. The definition of high density doesn't work for our county, or we want to create our own definition.
Urban services.
Or urban services or whatever. So maybe we, the approach we take is to pull out the APA dictionary, go through it, compare it with the terms. That people are so concerned about and where they match, if their definition works, we just use that. And then by exception, if there's something that's unique to our county, then we create a county unique to our definition. Anytime you adopt a national standard, they always put exceptions at the end.
And and this is strictly for the comprehensive plan.
It's gonna be difficult, so. I think one of the things, one of the.
That would be.
One of the terms that they were struggling with was. Large. What's large? Bigger than small.
So I I don't know, they asked me what what's your definition of rural, and you think it's not urban. But but right? It's true, but.
Then you guys gotta get a, got rid of the urban land use designation.
Didn't seem fit in a rural county.
No.
When they come back, you never know. All right, well, I'll give us the.
I'll show you guys an email with all of the.
It's not sure where to start.
It would be handy if they had a list of terms they were concerned about.
Well, we can almost.
Urban services. Combine, combine water or whatever that term is, it's in the code then.
Sanitary services.
Sanitary services.
I think defining that would be decent.
That sanitary service is happening.
Does it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I mean.
Well, I think if we codified that, or really I'm codifying because we're talking about resolutions, but. I think if we put that in glossary terms, it makes sense.
I think what we ought to do is eliminate the term for services.
Well. Just define what services go with the development of small acreage. That's what we're aiming, right?
Well, I think what we were trying to do was defer to sanitary services. Use the part deal with the urban services, doesn't deal with roads and all that stuff, but it deals with water, it deals with.
Right. So sanitary services where we kind of land on exactly what is that. As we had, there's so many places where it said urban like services. How much of those have been scrubbed? Uh, we go, but there's.
They're trying to run it.
Yeah.
And then it's, I'm not sure we did that, or I don't remember us using. We're suspended three, three years. I just not remember, but I don't remember us using bourbon line for urban services.
Well, thank, be be careful to scrub those out.
I think urban services, being sanitary services plus. Well, yeah.
Neighborhood chit chat this morning after the meeting about the the fires. Yesterday, yeah, and Jared really got up and said, you all realize that any one time I have four deputies covering the county? Four. Everybody went, what? Just an area, no, the whole county, four, I do it one time, that's it. Just an area, no, the whole county, four, I do it one time, that's it. Urban services. Wish we did, I, I invited.
That's my, they make me just your services.
Yeah, yeah. The services because.
These services. Public safety services on the other plan. You, you did towards the end, I think we were using public safety services.
That's interesting, cause I've seen two sheriff's cars in the precinct area. Well, they might.
The rest of the county must be really.
Yes, yeah, well, that's, that's the case, that's what he said to me.
And sometimes they're talking to each other.
Yeah, they sit at the parking lot, door to door, talking, so. Oh, the guy came on. Blanchard, this guy, this guy. There's always those that live there and then.
Sure they were, I'm sure they were doing.
It, it's hard, it's hard. Sorry, we're gonna pause in our progression on chapters three and four for now, then.
We have two meetings scheduled for September. We have a hearing next week. The only items that are on that agenda are. Those two text amendments. Um, you have a meeting on the second, which you're gonna have Bob, not Bob. Jack, Jack Howard, Bob Howard's emerged soon. Uh, Jack Howard here, that'll probably take up a good hour of that discussion, requesting a subcommittee. Um, to talk about source water protection. He has a lot of good information, um.
You might put him down for two hours.
Yeah.
He, he can chat.
He can. He does have a couple of subject matter experts he's bringing on. Flint Hall, I believe, is one of the guy's names. Yeah, L, L Flint Hall is his name, is some. It's like a retired water expert, so. It's really looking at the um. Well ahead overlay zone, which is what we have now, and maybe changing that to the source fire protection, and then some minor edits, and then building a tool into like a. He's got a lot of cool stuff. I'm not gonna try to steal his somewhere, so I'll just leave you a little bit, so you can be excited for next meeting. Um. And then you have.
Group that was talking about all the stuff in the rest of the state with water control. I don't know, he's using the same, Eric.
Yeah, he's, he's out of, so Jack is the. He's part of the sunny side.
South side water.
South side, um. And then he has a.
Yeah, he's a.
Couple other guys he's been working with, and I've been meeting with him for a good six months, probably once a month to go over this stuff, so. I suggested the subcommittee idea, and he lashed on to that. Thought it was a good idea, and it gives him some authority to go and discuss this with agencies to gather information and kind of build this, this model. And then maybe kind of provide some additional um. Potential changes to code, so.
So, for the meeting on the seventh, uh. We request uh, that the board. Give us their list of. Terms they want to buy.
Yep, we can ask.
Yeah, that'd be good.
So we have our, so you have a joint workshop with the board on the twenty eighth. I do have it listed as a joint workshop, so. Maybe something out of that is you can request the board provide, and we can send an email beforehand. Um, provide part of the glossary terms or define a list of glossary terms to give to the planning commission to, to help. Define for them, so. I don't know, it's a kind of a new concept coming from the board. I don't know if that should be included in one of those. Yeah, one of those sections, or if it should be a recommendation as an appendix provided by the planning commission, so. Um, that seems to be probably the most appropriate. An, an appendix to the whole comp plan. We can run this past Commissioner Donkey. He's my liaison, I can see what he thinks. And then have it as a, an item for the board to consider on the twenty eighth.
So just to, uh, so I will not. Now I will be ending the. The board hearing on the point seven, besides that. But I will. Try to be on, so for the, I mean. Here it. It's important, right?
Yes. Do you want Don to chair that meeting?
Yeah.
Is he, he's still, yeah, he's the vice chair right now.
I is.
Okay, so that's, yeah. The twenty eighth, I, I will not.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, I don't think we're gonna answer, so we're putting off chapter three and four. Until further notice.
I think you can keep it on the agenda, but. Probably kick it down the road. All right.
Hi, do you guys want me to add a, as a placeholder on that agenda for now, a glossary of terms?
Sure.
Like a comp plan appendix, a glossary of terms or something along those lines as well.
Yeah, I just, I, I would hope that. Anybody that's attending the, the board meetings. Would encourage them to adopt information component. And then worry about the. I think it's. Makes no sense to me. To be operating on a implementation plan that was decided, which was adopted in December of nineteen twenty twenty. And has nothing to do, or very little to do with. Comp as. Or, and, and which has its own set of vague terms that are. Pardon me? Which has its own set of vague terms that are not.
Right.
Right.
And those names, paying attention to that.
All right, anything else we can do today?
A whole bunch, but.
That's up.
So there's a whole lot. I got a whole bunch of use tables that need refined. But I, I don't have anything specific to present.
Well, I mean, we can go through the use tables. I mean, I, that's just my feeling, you know, I think it's Eric's. Big Dave's, well. I just kind of feel like we're spinning our wheels, we don't. I think, I thought there was just gonna be minor modifications to the land use component. You know, they're gonna add a. In the land use designation somehow. Um, that'd be one thing, but I, I, you know, if you're gonna hold five workshops. That'll be, that needs to be substantially revisions, so.
Agreed. So I think you're correct, like, we really do need to. Modify the zoning descriptions to match the comp plan land use designations and then establish uses. If we go. If you skip a step, you're gonna end up spinning your wheels and going like ping ponging between the two, right? So we don't know what the land use's designations are gonna be, therefore you really shouldn't. Refine, and you've done a pretty decent job already refining the zoning descriptions. But now we have to put a, a pin in that and wait until those land use designations are finalized, so. I, I, I think I agree with your guys' position right now.
Yeah, it's unfortunate, because I, you know, kind of feel like we, John, have none, but.
Sure.
Sometimes it's wasting me, that's. So we are.
Yeah. So I'll add glossary of terms to that and get that agenda posted for the second, and then Mr. Howard as well on there.
I, I do have one question.
Sure.
On the use table, that's all right. Just real quick, adding event. Event, venue, wedding venue. Uh, currently, are they, are those currently ran underneath the public use table?
Yep. There's two public uses that are generally commercial in nature, and if you go back to. Two thousand nine, I think was the first time that a wedding venue is run as a private community facility.
Correct.
Um, so player established this, uh, after this code was adopted, that. Wedding venues are similar use to churches and grange halls and. Therefore run under the private community facility slash grange hall, right, so that, but that is. You also have a definition of a commercial activity, which generally should be under the commercial use table, you would think, um. Marinas is the other one, where that's also, it's sometimes public, but more often than not, commercial. So whether or not we have a commercial standard and a public standard, whether, you know, like a common ownership or owned by a public entity. More often than not, they're commercial in nature, so that's also found on the public use table, for whatever reason, that's just been bugging me for a few years. Um, so moving that or establishing two, and then establishing a, an event venue. I did some preliminary reviews of some other codes. I think we talked about this. Um, before, maybe I, maybe it wasn't with you guys, I don't know, I'm getting some blank stares, so. I started on a, just doing some homework on if we were to establish something like this. I didn't find anything in, in Idaho that had a, there's one or two. Counties in central Idaho, like Boise area, like that kind of. Where they, they have like a venue, but they don't have really good standards. I wanted something with very specific standards, given the. The level of interest that this has both on. Potential applicants or applicants or their neighbors, so, um, I think. Having a. Very clear delineated standards for review would be good. Yes, serial, but then goes back to which zone should they be in? Because you've, you know, follow that logic train all the way back, right? So what zones, I don't know, let's look at the descriptions of the zones, those are up for interpretation and change. Confined designation, so we could craft that type of, of use. But without knowing what zones they go in, like, how do you establish what standard should apply? So that's really what you need to start. So, I, I don't know. That's my two cents on it.
When do we make the recommendation on my?
April twenty second. If, if I remember right, I recently looked at that recommendation later. Then we held two workshops, a hearing with the board. We need two more workshops or one workshop, and then another hearing with the board, if I remember.
All right, so anything else with the Congress? If not, will be adjourned until. Thank you. Uh, August seventh, four thirty.
Next one, yeah, yes, four thirty.